Of those minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed, say nay. Any extensions? So our minutes from February 22nd are approved. Thank you. We can begin our public hearings for this evening, of which we have two. And just for those who are unfamiliar with our process, as each application is introduced by Heather or Jeff, providing a brief summary, we'll then ask the applicant or their representative to present an overview of the application just introduced. Following questions and clarifications from the commission members, we'll invite other members of the public participating in this meeting to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application at hand. And where there are comments made in opposition to the application, we'll encourage the applicant to return to address the comments made in opposition. So with that, I think we're set to get started. Or was there anything else Heather, we need to know in terms of tonight's meeting and our agenda and the organization of our business?
Only that our first order of business is a discussion item, and we'll be having an update from Dan Kozniewski, Director of Syracuse Onondaga County Planning Agency, to give us, to give you, the Planning Commission, an update on rezones. So if we could start with that, then we can get into the hearings.
It's right in front of me. Plus, you brought it up on the screen. My apologies, Dan, because I was gonna think, it doesn't make a lot of sense for Dan to wait till the end of the meeting for an update on this. So please, if you would, Dan, give us an idea of where things stand in this process.
Okay, sure. I don't want to take a lot of your time. I know you have an agenda and have applicants on. But we have, we've been reaching out to county counselors, and I said, hey, we should really fill in the planning commission on where we're, where we are and what our plan, as it were, as much as we have one, moving forward will be. Just to remind you, in December 2019, we, the law was introduced to county council for the purposes of seeker. And we're generic environmental impact statement. And as soon as we wrapped up scoping, we started to get into a couple of policy issues like affordable housing, and the pandemic really took off. And which actually bought us a little time to really develop that affordable housing policy that will be in there. But right now, we've, we've, and we've, you know, we've had some conversations even with Chris and, and, you know, some other stakeholders in the community, and they pointed out some things that are all very valid issues. But we, we've decided as a team and with President Hudson and the mayor, we said, you know, we, this is, it's an election year. We've got a, this is a, we, we really can't, we, we could continue taking things on for the next 10 years if we, if we let ourselves. So right now, what we're trying to do is wrap up the law as best we can. And so that will be forthcoming. And that will be kind of a color coded edit. So you'll be able to see every change that was made since December 2019. And wrapping up the generic environmental impact statement. And we've been having conversations with county counselors, just to make sure that that's the direction they want to go in as well. And so far, I think we're about halfway, maybe a little more than halfway, and that they're all, you know, I mean, I think we'll all have reservations until the very end. But they've been encouraging, and they said, you know, I mean, the council's going to change this fall. There's an election this fall. We, we really, this is, and, you know, even though election year is probably not the most ideal time, they've all been through this, you know, they've, they've been following along. We've kept them informed. So they're ready to, to consider taking action on this. So right now, we're reaching out to them. Tonight, I'm reaching out to you, and I'm sure I'll be back. We'll be back as a team as soon as we can with more substantive documents to discuss. And then hopefully, starting in April, we will start reaching out to the public. The other thing that we decided was that, you know, some of the, some of the changes even from December 2019, you know, like affordable housing, really deserved to have some daylight on them and reach out to all of our stakeholders and say, hey, you know, this is the direction that, that the city, you know, that, that everybody seems to want to go in. And get some feedback from the public and collect some more, you know, collect some information and comment from them and really give them the chance to weigh in. And also give them the chance to bring up any neighborhood issues specifically, especially with concerns of the map. And we can try to address those. Like I said all along, if we get to the point where we're really just looking at the map and considering changes there, then we're, we're in pretty good shape. But for right now, at least, we're really trying to move forward with what we have and not necessarily take on any more deeper, bigger policy issues. Because they, anything that's outstanding or anything that we could take on is going to take some time. It would take some study and some policy development to really address them. And we can do that with a new rezone in place, just as well as with their current law in place. So that's my quick summary of where we are. So we're, we're reaching out to councils now, reaching out to you, trying to finish up these documents and get them in a, in a state that we can, we can deliver them to council and the planning commission. And then we can start really talking about schedule. And at the same time, we're going to be going out to the public, TMTs as much as we can virtually and otherwise when we can. And, you know, try to kind of give everybody one last pass over this thing before we make a big push for adoption.
And that's sounds as though you've made good use of the unexpected gift of time.
Yes.
Provided by the pandemic.
I think we did. I think, you know, it's probably, it's not, reason, I mean, zoning is never perfect. That's why we have appeals processes and discretionary boards and all that. I mean, it's, it's, you know, there's always some gray area they have to account for, and that's why it's designed the way it is. But I think for, for the amount of time since the last kind of overhaul and a lot of the newer, you know, the new zoning districts and the reduction in zoning districts, I'm not saying that there aren't still issues or that we're not going to find issues. It's just, you know, at some point, you really have to say, okay, is this, is this better than what, what exists? And is this worth moving forward with? And I think it is. So, and I think that's important that the, that the team feels that way, that, you know, we're never, you know, we could work on this for the next 10 years and not get it perfect. But is this worth, is this worth moving forward with? So, and that's a question you guys will have to ask too, since you have to vote on it and have a hearing on it.
Exactly, exactly. Can you wait just a moment here, Dan? And let's see if there are any questions of where we stand now from the commission members? Anyone have some specific questions for Dan about where we are in this process?
I just one question, Dan, when you start moving ahead with, when you're done with the initial council response, will you be making a specific presentation to the steering committee? Or advisory?
Yes, we are. I don't know, presentation as much as we can. But yes, we are going to do a presentation. In fact, one of the things we thought about doing, and actually, the advisory committee is a good place to, to do that. One of the things that we want to do is, when we do a presentation, we want to record it and then post it on the city's YouTube channel so that, you know, if you missed the meeting or whatever, it's still available. And still do, you know, the meetings, but still, and then we'll have that resource that people can go on their own and see. So yes, we are, we are planning on doing that.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dan about this process?
All set. Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for taking the time to bring us up to date and look down the road a little bit about where and where we're going with this and when. And we will look forward to reconnecting with you before much longer as we continue to move forward.
Yeah, me too. I'm looking forward to, to, to wrapping this up and getting that to you in a state that, that you can review it and we can move forward with it.
Absolutely. Great.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks again. You're welcome to stay if you wish.
I want my kid to soccer.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
Okay, now we can begin our public hearings.
All right. So the first public hearing this evening, oh, good evening, commission members, Mr. Coolidge. The first public hearing this evening is a special permit for a restaurant at SP 2102. This is at 1011 to 1013 Park Street. Salat Moose is the owner and applicant, and it lies within a business Class A zoning district. If you recall, this is actually a continuation. We had held this because waivers were, a waiver was necessary from the Board of Zoning Appeals for relief from the required parking regulations of two spots for the two residential units that were proposed within the building. And we had passed along comments from the commission to the Board of Zoning Appeals that we received from the commission and the public at the last public hearing. And they did present to the Board of Zoning Appeals, however, the project may be changing, but we still need confirmation on that and some more information. We have not had a chance to talk to the applicant or the representative. We did receive some new floor plans on Friday, but we have not had the chance to evaluate or ask the applicants some questions. So although we did advertise it tentatively because we wanted to move it along in case the BZA did approve it, however, they did hold it open for more confirmation. So that's the update that I have. I know the architect is here. And again, we would need to ask after our presentation, those in favor and against because we did advertise it.
Okay, then let's move right to the applicant for an overview as well as an update on the key elements of this application.
Okay. Bill Pitcher from Pitcher Architect and 124 Feagle Avenue, Syracuse, New York. We presented last time. And the changes that were made as a result of the hearing. You commented, the commission commented on the need for the screening at the back of the lot. That's been added to the drawings. There's an existing fence here. So basically, the whole back area is now screened. That's a change from the previous presentation. We ran into several things at the zoning hearing. I ran into a technical problem with the makeup air handler and the sep, the grease trap for the kitchen. So basically, the kitchen customer area got redesigned. We still have the same square footage for customer area, but the hood has been flipped over here. So this is just a different configuration of pretty much everything that you saw before the first hearing. Result of the zoning hearing, the owners decided that they wanted to give up the first floor apartment and make it all storage. So that the entire first floor is proposed to be one commercial unit. That leaves one residential unit on the second floor, which is unchanged. So ZBA has to consider the waiver for the apartment parking spot, and the commission has to consider the waiver request for the one commercial area on the first floor. The other, the other waiver that we're asking for is this planting area. We're required to have an eight foot of green space in front of the building as a buffer. The physical configuration doesn't permit that. This is the right of way line, and we got about two and a half feet, which we are planting. But we request a waiver for the eight foot depth of that. The the issue of the fence, we're requesting a waiver, partial waiver on the fence. This is the alley, and you'll see that the neighboring building has two boarded up windows. Our proposed new fence stops at the backyard at the building. It, it doesn't seem like there's any functional purpose to continuing the fence along the brick wall. So we're asking for a waiver for that. And those are the three waivers. This all goes away in the back, the screening and our new fence stops at the neighboring building at this edge. This is the, this is the parking lot behind this site. And that's pretty much it. The question was curbing, and I did find on Zoom this particular one where they were replacing the public sidewalk. The existing curb is just an old sandstone. It's about two inches tall. And at the driveway, there is no curb at all. I guess that is the curb cut. So that is basically presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for the applicant from the commission members?
So just to be clear, you're removing one of the apartments?
Yes, the total building is first floor, all commercial, and second floor, one apartment.
So, and the, but the majority of the first floor then is just labeled as storage, right? So
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not developing at this point. They're just using it for equipment and food storage.
But basically, leaving the layout from the apartment?
The apartment upstairs is on, yes, we're not changing any walls in the first floor, what used to be the first floor apartment.
Okay, it just, I, I don't know how these rules work. So this is for Heather or Jeff? That, is that an issue if the commercial functioning space is such a minor amount of square footage to the storage? It looks a little like the dog wagging the tail. I didn't know if that, if that's a zoning concern.
Yes. So we have not had a chance to talk to Mr. Pitcher or the applicant because this, these plans just came in on Friday. That is a concern. And so we need more information and clarification, as does the BZA, about what's being stored, et cetera. So we will plan on doing that unless our attorney advises otherwise. It would seem that until we get those clarifications and things resolved, best course of action might be to hold this. And I'd like to confirm that.
Heather, I, I would recommend holding this issue. It's unclear to me. I haven't had much time to look at the new plans, but it, it seems that the storage, as the board member pointed out, is a pretty large percentage of the first floor. And the question to me that pops into my mind is whether it's, still could be considered an accessory use? And is it meant to be accessory to the commercial space? So I, we need clarification as to what is being separate use than the commercial space? Is that not in the information needed?
Catherine, you were breaking up a bit there, the audio portion, but I think the gist of it was because of the lack of clarity on some new issues, given the most recent change, I think you're recommending we hold until we get that additional clarification, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I comment? At the hearing, the owners expressed the idea that they want to in the future expand the space. They're not interested in renting to another tenant as an apartment. So it's sort of a holding pattern decision at this point. And if there were any future expansion, we would be back here for another modification hearing.
Thank you for that additional information. I have a question, and I apologize if we covered this at the last meeting. I can't remember the response, but the application material indicates a maximum of 10 employees on the site at one time. Can you confirm if that's accurate? That sounds like a lot of people, given the size of the space.
Yes, I'll need to confirm that. We had some discussion, and it's, it was more like two or three people per shift at maximum. Because it's doing such long hours, I think. I will confirm that and change and find out.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions from the commission members or staff on the proposal?
We just had a question about the gate in the back and opening up onto the adjacent property.
I can reverse swing. If you want to, I'll reverse the swing.
Well, no, the question would be, why is the gate necessary as you're going onto someone else's property as soon as you leave that gate? So we can talk about that when we have a meeting.
Other questions from staff or commission members? If not, then let's see if any of the participants on the call would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application. And as I'm remembering the WebEx peculiarities, you have to unmute yourself in order to speak. And we would ask folks to do that and just proceed through offering your comments, either for or against. And when the one speaker is finished, if the next speaker would then step in and offer their comments.
Okay, I can go down the list. The first one on the list, if you'd like to speak in favor or against proposal is Andrew Ansbro.
I'll pass. Thank you.
All right, Cloth Harbor and Associates.
No comments.
Dallas. Okay, thank you, Dallas. Derek Murray.
I will pass. Thank you.
James Cheshire. Gail Colley. Matt Finn.
No comments.
Matt O'Jum.
Thanks, Heather. No comments.
Vince P.
No comment.
Zero Lynn. Zero Lynn. If you could hear.
I'm here for media coverage, so I don't need to add any comments.
Okay, great job, everybody. That was the fastest I ever went through that list. I'm so impressed. Thank you for using mute correctly. All right, that's it. Steve.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that. So with this public hearing, SP-21-02, we will continue to hold the hearing open. The recent changes will be reviewed, and there'll be some follow up with the applicant for points of clarification and additional information. And this will remain on our agenda for our next. Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move to our next one. Heather, would you introduce that hearing, please?
Yes. All right. So this next hearing is a companion piece to the new business item. So I'm going to highlight them both. The public hearing is Z 2833 M1, and this is to modify the previously approved Plan Development District, District Plan. And it is at, apologize for all of these addresses, but 1010, 1022, 1054, 1074, and 1080 to 1082 South Clinton, 222, 224, 226, 228, and 232 Tomlin Street, 1002, 1022, and 1024 to 1040 South Salina Street, and 140, also known as 120 to 154 Portland Avenue. Rinaldi Taylor Street LLC, JMA Tech Properties LLC, and Catholic Charities of Syracuse are the owners of all those properties. JMA Tech Properties LLC is the applicant, and the zoning district is a Plan Development District. The new business item that is companion to this is Z 2839, and this is a project plan review. If the district plan modification is approved, then the project plan review would, would go forward. And this is to construct three surface parking lots and associated pedestrian walkways at the same addresses above. Catholic Charities, Rinaldi Taylor Street LLC, JMA Tech Properties LLC are the owners. JMA Tech Properties LLC is the applicant. And again, this is a Plan Development District. So I will turn it over to Cloth Harbor as a representative at this time.
Thank you very much.
Before you start, Brian, just a note, I think everyone's expecting this, but it's hard to talk about these two applications independently of one another. So we'll have the presentation of both pieces together, and then when the time comes for action by the commission, we'll act upon them separately. So with that, please begin.
Very good. Thank you very much. So my name is Brian Bouchard with CHA Consulting, project engineer, working on behalf of the applicant. And also, I believe on the line is Gail Colley from the ownership of JMA. So for this application, we've submitted a Plan Development District Plan modification. If I could, I'm going to square my, share my screen here. Just to walk you through it. So the purpose of the updated Plan Development District Plan is to keep the planning document in line with the focus of our planning and design team, essentially to make the best use of the property as an overall campus, which is for JMA's 5G wireless technology, and also to line up with the necessary amendment to the plan, and more specifically, the following item, which is the project site review for these improvements so that we can move forward in the springtime here with the site construction. And if you've driven by the site, you'll definitely notice that the, the building is well underway, a really prominent location within, you know, the corridor of South Salina Street. And to take you through the changes, you know, the district plan generally remains the same with respect to the boundary. We haven't changed the boundary of the plan. And also, the bulk regulations that were approved of the district remain unchanged as well. But there are some updates within basically three different parking areas. The building, the 5G manufacturing building administrative offices is still the same. It's within the center of the site, which is the overall, you know, center portion of the campus. So the building itself, in terms of footprint and size, hasn't changed, and that is already under construction through the building permit that we got prior, with the prior approvals. There were some minor modifications to the building that were transpired throughout the permitting process and some of the construction, you know, building materials and things like that. Some of the more detailed finishes of the building have changed slightly, and those elevations and floor plans have been submitted with the project site review application. But the building is still within the center of the site where it was before. The major The major changes are really the details that are associated with the parking lot at the corner of Tomlin and Salina Street, along with the pedestrian promenade and fire access lane that we have adjacent to the building. This is the overall campus plan, so it's just generally showing you what the details are, but there is a tree groved landscaped area within a portion of what was previously asphalt pavement. So this is kind of to present the building to the Salina Street frontage, along with the parking area that is at the hard corner of Salina and Tomlin with the access point just off of Tomlin at the intersection of Portland. The other parking lot that's down on Tomlin Street was slightly smaller in the previous campus master plan. So this parking area is larger to accommodate more spaces within the boundary, the same boundary again of the district. We've also included some comments that we've gotten through the permitting process with the street trees and some of the plantings along the road frontages, along with fire department access and coordinating some of the details and turning radiuses that were needed to get in and out of the campus. The campus is fully enclosed by a perimeter fence. The road frontages will be a decorative wrought iron style looking fence, basically identical to what you see across the street at Tomlin where the central campus is. So very much matching the aesthetic there. As we move up into the upper corner, this was previously shown as a parking lot. It's a little bit different of a configuration now, but generally still used as parking as well. And then between the two parking lots and directly adjacent to the building is our landscape courtyard area that leads you from both of the parking areas into the main atrium entrances to the building through the pedestrian promenades that also serve as fire access lanes. So the, I guess that's the Plan Development District update, is really to keep this master plan in good standing with the changes that are being represented on the more detailed plan set, which is the companion piece for the project site review, which is needed to be reapproved because of the changes that were associated with the project site review and the ability for us to start construction on these parking lots. Really, the generalities of this are kind of the same. It's just the details of each specific space. And I guess if there's any comments or questions from the commission members either on this particular overall master plan for the Plan Development District and how it matches the the more detailed site plan that are on the companion piece for the project site review, I can answer them if you're ready.
Okay, let's see if there are questions. Are there questions on either application, the district plan modification or the site plan review for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions that might be better directed towards staff. So because the parking lot designs are being altered, is that why we need to amend the plan?
Yes, the district plan is specific to certain I'm trying to think of the word, development standards. So there's maximum district coverage, floor area ratio, setback, yards. So there's parking surface coverage, structural coverage, and that's what the district coverage is broken down into. So that is what is changing because the open space is different now because of the parking lots. So with respect to the facade changes, that's not something that the commission would review. But it is for the, basically what is happening on the site. And as far as structural coverage and new parking areas or new construction, and these are new parking areas.
So right now in the chart, it says for off-street parking, Percy 31, 1 for every six employees, which would mean.
Well, we would need to know how many employees they have. We don't, we don't know that. We're just giving you what the regulations are. They're proposing far above, well, I don't know if it's far above, to be honest with you. They're proposing 244, right, Brian?
Correct, yeah, 244 spaces. So I guess, just to maybe answer it in a different way, the bulk regulations for the district that were approved before have not been modified, but the actual, for instance, parking count or green space coverage is slightly different in what we're providing in this master plan based on the current design. But we haven't requested any change to the actual bulk regulations that were approved. So the site plan conforms to the the existing district regulations, if that's what your question was.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. I don't, I'm trying to figure out what's the tripwire for having to modify the plan. Does it look like that while there have been modifications to the parking lots, they seem to be, I've got a total of a net increase of 45 spaces, if the math works out. And I don't know what that changes, what that translates into square footage, but it, just looking at the layout of the parking lots, like the one in the northern quadrant, if you will, it seems like there was one row of parking added on the far left. And then I think the same thing on the one in the lower left corner. So I'm wondering, is it even that those modest changes, Heather or Jeff, that's what got us up over some threshold in terms of square footage?
Well, usually with a Plan Development District, District Plan, you're telling us what your future your future development is. When this was first presented, they had asked for what was, what was there. And so now they're expanding some of the parking areas, which changes the district coverage as far as parking surface and open space. So doesn't change the floor area ratio because they're not, they're not constructing anything at the time, right now. If they want to, then they should maybe outline that. Like if they have any future plans right now, like that's the whole beauty of a Plan Development District, is that you are showing us your future plans. It's a campus plan. It's a mini comprehensive plan. Right now, this is their mini comprehensive plan. Now, if they, if they have ideas of what future development might be, they could outline that in like a a bubble, like here's where we might want to expand the building in the future, which would make the district coverage this. Here are the land uses that we might want to think about in the future. So if they have all that locked in, then that, you could just have project plan reviews, because they'll be consistent with that.
But the district plan modification that we're considering?
Yeah.
Or am I confusing these two? Now, we're modifying the plan, and then we're looking specifically at the construction of the, of the parking lot.
Correct. Correct.
We're modifying the plan, we're modifying the plan.
Chris, if I can interject, this is Jeff there. As Heather pointed out, the district plan is supposed to be, supposed to be the vision. This district plan for right now has a very finite vision. And the development standards as laid out in item 12 of your agenda. Although JMA is not asking for anything above and beyond what's in the zoning ordinance, what is being proposed or what's being established as a result of this particular district plan is what's in the proposed column of the table in item 12. So if they want to do any future development in that gray area on the left side of South Clinton Street, or if they want to do any development on the north end of the district plan at 1010 South Clinton Street, they're going to have to update the district plan again anyway to accommodate that development, which will then, again, alter the existing development standards. So by nature of this proposal, they are increasing the parking surface coverage from what was last approved. They are altering some others state conditions such as the triangular landscape portion between Portland and South Salina Street. And they're taking away the access drive from the street on the left there. I don't remember what street that is. So all of that affects the parking surface coverage. It affects the district plan as a whole. Not so much, if they were to just restrike the parking lots, it wouldn't necessarily be a an issue unless they were decreasing the parking spaces below what was required. But based on the finite, based on the finite vision or focus of this district plan, anything they do going forward is going to necessitate another district plan amendment because they're just reflecting what's currently being proposed and the development standards that go with it.
So as I said in the beginning, then, whatever the modest increase is in in pavement for parking, that was enough to say that the previously approved district plan needed to be modified because the development standards are so narrowly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? On either proposal? Okay, thanks, George. Anyone else? Brian, I don't have a substantive question, but I do have one in terms of timing. You indicated that with approvals on these, work would begin, outside work would begin this spring season. Expected completion date would be approximately when?
As soon as, as soon as it can be built, you know, hopefully midsummer. Obviously, we've, we've got a really good head start on the building. A lot of that was good timing for the winter months in terms of what could get done throughout the winter months, and we didn't have a lot of opportunity to start the majority of what you see on this plan for site work based on either the wintertime or the fact that, you know, 50% of the the parcel that's west of South Clinton Street was occupied by a former Syracuse stamp building. That demolition has taken place, so we are definitely in a position with, you know, this board's approval on both of these agenda items to get our site permits updated and start as soon as possible with the hopes of completing the site work and all the utility improvements that we're doing on behalf of the city at the same time that the building is being completed and occupied in short order here late summer.
Okay, great, thank you. So one last call here for commission members. Any questions for the applicant on either one? And if they're not, then we will go around the horn again and invite members of the public who wish to comment either for or against either application to do so. Heather, would you walk us through the list of participants that we have this evening?
Yes, sir. All right. If you'd like to speak in favor or against, I'm going to go down the line alphabetically. The first one is Andrew Ansbro.
No comment, thank you.
Dallas?
No comment.
Derek Murray?
No comment, thank you.
Matt Finn?
No comment.
Matt O'Jah?
OJ, no comments, thanks Heather.
I'm sorry about that, man. Okay, Vince P.
Interested party, but no comments, thank you.
All right, and zero Lynn?
No comment, thank you.
All right. There we have it, Steve. We're down the, we're down the list.
Okay, well, that was fast. And so no, no comments in opposition to invite you to respond to, Brian. So I think we are at a point where we can close the public hearing. And so we will do that. And before we move on to other items on the agenda, we'll pause here first and look at the District Plan Modification, which is Z2833M1, and see if there's a motion for action on the plan modification.
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion before us? There's no discussion, then all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So the District Plan Amendment is approved. And that moves us out of our public hearing docket into the new business. And lo and behold, we have a related business item here, Z-2839, which is the project site review for the same site that we just acted upon in terms of the plan amendment. Is there a motion on this item, the project site, or project plan review, rather?
To approve with a negative declaration.
Second?
Before there's a second, if I can, if I can just interject, I would recommend subject to concurrence by our attorney, that any approval of this item be conditioned on approval by the common counsel of the District Plan Amendment.
So moved.
So moved, second to that.
Good catch, Jeff, thank you. So we have that amended motion and the second to that amended motion. Discussion on the motion before us? If there is no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Then the project plan review is also approved. Brian, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for your support. And I don't believe there's any other items on the agenda related to this, so I appreciate it and have a good night.
Thank you, you as well. We continue on, however, with some other business. New business. Heather, we have two items here. Would you introduce the first of those, please?
Yes, my unmuted, no, not, okay. This is a time extension request for a site plan review, SR1604. This is to demolish an existing building and construct a five-story building at 328 West Patrick Street, Core West Patrick Street. Company LLC is the owner and the applicant, and this lies within a lakefront T51 zoning district. The initial deadline was March 28, 2017. You have extended this three times previous. The applicant is citing the ongoing pandemic as justification for the time extension. The last time, planning commission approved your request for only two years, and they had requested five. So just for some background on this, I believe this one and the next one, they did this, they requested five. No, for this one, they requested five. And the other one, they requested three, and you gave them two for both, so. And the other one, they requested three, and you gave them two for both, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Steve, if I can interject normally for new business, they're not required to attend. I did notify the applicant, didn't notify, but I just raised to their attention potential sensitivities with another extension. But she is on the road this evening and is unable to log into tonight's meeting.
Okay, well, thanks for
Okay, well, thanks for
thinking of that, reaching out.
Thinking of that.
And you're correct, there probably is some, it's a little unusual circumstance, fourth request for the time extension, but the commission members here present, thoughts on this request?
Well, I'm gonna just restate what I said the last time that this came forward, that this project was presented in 2016. And this is now 2021, and I realized last year might have been unusual because of the pandemic. But pretty much there was no movement on the project up until then. And my concern is that when this much time passes, and if a lot more time passes, other circumstances might have changed, and we might view not just this project, but any project differently from when it was first proposed. So I am not inclined to support another extension. That doesn't mean that I've changed my mind about a particular project if the circumstances stayed the same. But I think in looking at community-wide impacts and hearing on the side of the public, we'd be better off not extending this and just entertaining it again if and when they're ready to move forward in the future. And I would say the same for the second one.
Okay, and some, in some sense, I suppose it doesn't hurt for us to talk about these two together. It's the same or similar applicant, similar location, similar set of circumstances that, that surround both projects. And I remember that discussion from before, Chris, those very points that you made. Others, thoughts about these two proposed extensions?
I concur with Chris.
Okay, thank you. And a question for our attorney. If these time extension requests were not approved, the applicant is at liberty to return at such time when they are in a stronger position to initiate either or both projects. Is that correct?
Yes, the applicant would be able to reapply. And as Chris said, you would be, you would be viewing it under current current circumstances on the ground. I would, I would mention that last time when the applicant didn't, didn't come, you held it open in order to give them an opportunity to better defend in person their position. I just wanted to remind you of that in case you wanted to consider doing that again. Just holding it in, in order to have them speak in person, as Jeff said, he he had informed them of the upcoming meeting, but the applicant is on the road and can't attend. So I just, I just wanted to remind you that that was the course of action that you took last time. Heather, if I'm making any, or if I, if there's anything you want to add, feel free to jump in.
I think you no, I, I, gosh, it was so long ago. I forgot, but I know that they did grant them the extension, just not the full extension that they wanted at the time.
I, I happen to remember it, and I, I happen to remember this conversation being in City Hall, so it's definitely a while ago.
Yes, we were in the council chambers then.
Yes, we were. I, I think we were also, well, I will only speak for myself. I was fairly clear in my concerns that night. And while I appreciate your point, Catherine, that we might give them the opportunity, I don't think my view would be surprising, given what I said the last time around. And virtually, I'm assuming virtually nothing has changed, with the exception that they'll say that the pandemic occurred last year. But last year was the second of the two years that we gave them. So what happened in the first year before the pandemic? So, so I guess unlike the last time they were before us, this discussion would be a repeat. It would not be out of the blue. And, and I'm not really sure what they would say about what happened in the first year, that at least it changed my mind.
Oh, yeah, I, I do recall that conversation, and you were quite clear about your, your reasoning. And with regards to the pandemic, I, I think that it is, it's certainly an extremely compelling event that, that sold a lot of projects across the country around the world. But I would also, if, if I were questioning it, I, I would want to see specific examples of how the pandemic, whether they were taking concrete steps that were clearly put in hold because of the pandemic.
Well, if you thought that would make our deliberations more informed, I mean, we can certainly do that. But as I said, what I will be looking for is what did they do the first year? This, this is about to end the second year of a two-year extension. So if they were able to show us that the end of the first year before the pandemic struck, they're about to break ground, and then whoops, they didn't. Well, perhaps that would maybe change my mind, but I, there's nothing in the packet that would suggest that. But, but if, if the majority of folks, the commission members would like to give them the opportunity to comment, we can certainly hold it to the next time. I, I don't know that. It would have to be some pretty compelling factual information to, to make me view this differently. But if we want to give them that opportunity, I guess I'd be willing to do that.
Walter, George, you have a strong feeling about holding this or potentially acting on either one of these this evening?
Oh, I, my point of view is holding is probably an appropriate thing to do. If the other members feel that hearing from the applicant would make make sense. Let me ask staff, I think you answered this question. I'm just gonna ask it again. If we don't act on it, are they prejudiced in any way at this point if we don't grant an extension?
The approvals become null and void.
And they essentially start over?
Correct.
When, when they are ready?
Right.
If we hold it, do they maintain the approvals?
For the time, for the amount of time that you wish to grant the extension for.
Well, they expire tomorrow.
Right. My, my point is if we're holding it for our administrative purposes, does that give any? Does that hold everything, or does, or does this expire in March of 2021? Is it, I guess that's the question.
But in the caution, if you are holding it, a motion reflecting that, acknowledging that the expiration is now and that you are holding it, I, I, I don't think, I think that that would be, that would be appropriate to just put in your, in your motion, if that's the option that you go with.
So essentially that we would be giving them an extension only until our next meeting so that they could come and make their case?
Yeah, and Heather, if I'm recalling correctly, we have had a few that have gotten extensions after it expired, right?
That's correct.
We should, well, we have granted.
Usually, usually it's one year for a one-year extension. This is
Had a couple of situations where somebody's, somebody's approval had expired, and for whatever reasons, we considered it after the fact.
Right? Yeah, I mean, if they were to go get a building permit tomorrow, they could.
But they couldn't on Thursday.
But they couldn't, well, we, we would have a conversation with the, the permit desk, but essentially it's, it's the time that they, it's not the time that they pull the first permit. It's the time that they finish it. So you, you would need to extend it either way. But yeah, it's fine if you, if you wish to hold, and then we can make sure that Core will be available to be here next time.
I, I think if we go that route, it would be incumbent upon them. I would ask staff to make it clear to them concerns that I've stated, so that if we're gonna hold this for them, they can make their case. Then, as Catherine said, they need to show specifically how the pandemic stopped the project in its tracks. And for me, because again, we gave them a two-year extension, I'm going to assume they were maybe making progress until a year ago this March. So they would have to show that. So I guess to that end, I would move that we hold this one open until our next meeting with those conditions that they get an extension until our next meeting date, if they would like to come in and explain why they need this.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And additional discussion? If not, those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so we'll hold this. We move to SR16-05, which is a very similar set of circumstances. And Jeff is the representative, the same representative who's on the road this evening for
Who's on the road this evening for?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So is there a need for further discussion on this, or is there a motion someone wants to make for SR-16-05?
Do you want me to announce that just for the record?
Please.
Okay, here we go. SR1605 is a site plan review for a time extension, fourth request to reconstruct an existing parking lot at 128 Spencer Street, Core Spencer Street LLC is the owner and the applicant. And it's in the lakefront T5 zoning district. And this is, this request is, they would like it until March of 2022, so just one year from tomorrow. Last time, the city planning commission, they requested three years and you gave them two. So.
I, I would make the same arguments that I made for the last one.
Okay.
Anyone else have additional comments on the merits of this application? For a time extension? If not, is, is there a motion for action one way or the other?
I repeat my motion on, as the previous app, for the previous application, so that we hold it.
Okay, and I heard a second from George. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so we'll hold this one till our next meeting, which will be in April. We do have yet another item here, modification consideration, Heather?
Yes. Here, this is SP2011M1. This is a special permit modification for a restaurant within a convenience store, and this is this real quick. The reason that we have this in this category is because okay, well, let me go, it's 1701 East Fayette Street. Mohammed Al Hashishi is the owner and applicant, and lies within a business class A zoning district. They're replacing signs. They a transportation planner also provided comments. But the expanded waiver is because of the signage. And the transportation planner talked about bike racks as a result of this new proposal and the, and the site plan that was presented. So there's that consideration and also the consideration of the additional wall sign. And with a special permit, you're allowed one ground, one wall, and so they want an additional wall. So you could have a hearing, or you could not have a hearing and vote on it tonight. It's up to you.
So it's within the commission's purview to either authorize a hearing for this or not. The main change, main part of the modification is the additional wall sign. What's the sense of the commission? Do you think this rises to a level where a public hearing would be warranted to give the public a chance to weigh in on these issues? Or are you comfortable acting independently of a hearing with the information that's provided in our packet? And we do have comments from the depart, city departments that have reviewed it as well to help guide us.
It seems to me go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
It, it seems to me if we're inclined to not approve their requests, that we should have a hearing.
Right. I think that is the, i- if you need to gather more information that is not readily evident, then yes, a hearing, that's something the commission would do in order to gather that information. So, yep, there you go.
We need a motion on that, or can we just, can we just recommend it?
You would I'm sure Catherine would say make a motion to hold a hearing. But she has the yellow triangle, so I'm not sure if she can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Um, yes, I, I would say make, to make a motion.
So I move that we hold this till the next time. And pending, getting some more information.
So to have
A public hearing?
To yeah, hold, hold a public hearing, okay.
Okay. And is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this motion to authorize a hearing for this application? If there is no discussion, then all in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? And any abstentions? So we've just authorized this for a hearing for our next meeting, SP-20-11M1. Okay, thank you. We have one additional item of business before moving to the authorizations for the next meeting. We have an old business item regarding an antenna review project, Heather?
Yes, this is SR-1206M2. This is a site plan review for an antenna to modify an existing rooftop antenna at 2600 to 2622 James Street. Jan Nastri is the owner and T-Mobile is the applicant. It lies within a business class A zoning district. The commission requested photographic simulations, which the applicant did submit in order for the commission to see what this would actually look like on top of the building. So hopefully that's helpful to you. It would be sheets S1, S2, and S3. And we also did confirm that the James Street overlay does not restrict in any way any additional, does not impose any additional regulations on antennas in the James Street overlay. So the rules that we have in the other parts of the zoning ordinance still apply, but there's no additional rules because of James Street overlay.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. So we're at liberty to act upon this if we are satisfied with the simulation graphics that we received from the applicant. Everyone had a chance to look at those simulation photos?
Yes.
And with that as additional information, is there a motion for the site plan review for the antenna project?
Move approval with a negative declaration?
Thank you. Thank you both. Discussion on the motion for approval. Hearing, no discussion. Those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? So we have approval of the site plan review for SR-12-06M2. Heather and Jeff, are there other items to come before the commission this evening except for the authorizations for our April 5th meeting?
No.
Okay, then before we take care of that item, Catherine, do you have an update on the governor's executive order for public meetings?
Yes, they have been extended to March 28th, which will fall before our next meeting. So even if it's not extended though, that will be after public notice goes out. So this will be the format that we will be using. And it occurred to me that tomorrow is our, the anniversary of our first WebEx. We will fill the city hall.
That was a fun day.
That was, that was hard to get used to.
A year, look at what an expert I am at this moment.
You are, you are.
It all takes 365 days. I can't believe it, really.
When we meet again in person, we'll have to celebrate. But thanks for the update. So we'll have our April 5th meeting, we'll be in WebEx format once again. And with that, no other business, excuse me, is there a motion for authorization of the six new hearings plus the items that are being held from today?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? So we have those applications authorized for April the 5th. And with that, I think the only remaining item is a motion to adjourn.
Steve?
Yes.
I will not be at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you for letting us know. And if that is going to be the case for anyone else, and if you discover that later, please let Heather or Jeff know, because then we need to think about whether we have enough reform, but I will note that in advance. Rebecca, thanks for saying, bringing that to our attention.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you leave, I just wanted, I'm sorry that my audio was so bad. I missed all of Dan's presentation about Rezone, so if there were any questions for me, I just wanted to let you know that I couldn't hear them.
No, there were no questions for you, as I'm recollecting. He mostly talked about process and his current effort of reaching out to council members and the commission members and talked about how they had made use of the time during the pandemic to address some other elements of the, of the plan that, you know, affordable housing being, I think foremost among them, but a couple of others as well. So they made good use of that time. So it wasn't dead time, even though this is taking longer than expected and I think could always do better, but there comes a time when it is important to move the plan forward, even though it might need additional work later on down the road. That was my takeaway. But if I've missed anything that was key in his presentation, other commission members, please jump in and let Catherine know.
I can, I can speak to Dan too. I just wanted to make sure that you guys didn't have any questions about SIKR or any of the legal aspects of Rezone.
Okay, does anyone, well, we're on the topic?
All set, thanks.
Okay. I'm sure Catherine would entertain questions at a later time, but since we're here on the topic right now, bring them forward if you had anything pressing. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Was that a second, Rebecca?
No, it was a hump, but I'll, I'll take that as a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a huff. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned and we will meet again via WebEx on the 5th of April. Thank you all so much.
Have a good night, everybody.